All right, let's, let's at least start. We're not going to get that far ahead over the next couple of minutes. It is Monday, June 23rd, 7:00 PM. This is the Town of Dartmouth Planning Board Scheduled Meeting. Before we begin, once again, the Planning Board has voted in a public meeting to continue meeting virtually in accordance with the Governor's 2025 Extension of the Virtual Hybrid Open Meeting Option through June 30th, 2027. This is a public meeting. It will be held remotely. And as we are logged in through Zoom, so can others of the public and or watch it. The meeting is being recorded. And at this point in time, I'll go ahead and take a roll call. Margaret?
Here.
Lori?
Yeah.
Helio?
Here.
Nick Cyclepatis here. Brings us to administrative item. Administrative item number one is a comment period for a 40B that's being proposed on Hathaway Road. Many of us are familiar with the plot of land because it's received attention in the past. And it's before us, before us again. Before I turn it over to Dan to break it down for us, just to help everybody understand the scope of the project and what it means based on numbers. This project is 300 units, cumulatively five buildings of 60 units per building. But the breakdown is what is important here as it translates to affordable housing and opportunity. And what it means for our scope. One bedroom units, I'm sorry, studios will be 5% of the total project. One bedroom units will be 58% of the total project. Two bedroom units will be 27% of the total project. And three bedroom units will be 10%, which means one to two bedroom units will comprise 85% of this project. So Dan, if you, Dan or Ross, if you want to take us through it.
Mr. Chair, I have a sibling that's a direct abutter to this, so I think in best interest, I should recuse myself from discussion. But Ross did a field trip last week with Mass Housing out there, so I think he can give the board a good breakdown of this project.
Perfect. Much appreciated, Dan. Ross?
Okay. Hi, everybody.
Hi.
So yes, as Dan mentioned, I attended a walk-through with Mass Housing and a couple other members of the town hall. Essentially, what was broken down to us is a similar breakdown to what Nick just gave. And the Mass Housing representative essentially informed us that the comments that they're looking for are typically comments on the concept as a whole. Similar to, in the Planning Board's case, new subdivision. It would be different per department, but in the Planning Board's case, similar comments to what you would give on a new subdivision. This comment period ends July 10th. The plans that were given to us are in your packets, and if you would like to peruse those and email me any comments, I can comprise a comment letter similar to the one that you saw. That was the final draft. In your previous packet, was the final draft that was sent for the other 40B at the Country Club. So if you would like to peruse those over the next week or so and send me some comments, I will compile it and put the letter in your next packet for the July 14th meeting.
Did anything come up at the site visit?
Anything in particular?
Yeah.
No, it was, it was, it was basically an overview. I attended the, the walkthrough at the Country Club one as well. It was a different representative for Mass Housing, but very similar things were said. Essentially, they, they say that, you know, they're looking for eligibility. Different departments are going to have different things to say. They all have different scopes of, of, you know, how they view things. So essentially, the comment period allows each department to share what their unique scope would be. Any comments, concerns, or questions? And then that ends up getting dwindled down into specifics for the final draft letter. So nothing specific was really said at the walkthrough from, from my memory. Mostly it was what Nick broke down for us.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Folks, just a moment. I'm trying to help Kevin with the link to this meeting. Okay, Kevin will be joining us in a moment. Ross, sorry about that.
Do not be sorry. It's okay. Do you need me to?
What's that?
You need me to summarize anything that I said?
In all fairness, can we give Kevin 30 seconds or so? I think he's actually in the act of getting on right now.
That's totally fine. I hope that he had no issues with joining based off the packet, or else I can make sure I fix that for next time.
Let's give him a second here.
Sure.
Hello.
Hi, Kevin.
Excellent.
Hi, Kevin.
My apologies, guys. I, this is a rookie mistake. I downloaded the wrong packet.
All good. Did I finish up the roll call? Kevin Estes?
Here.
Great. All right, so Ross was just giving us, Dan recused himself as he has a sibling that's on a butter to the 40B related to Hathaway Road that's being presented tonight or shared with us tonight. Ross had a good summary of the project and he's willing to kind of give us a quick summary again. So Ross, if you don't mind.
Thank you. Yeah, of course, of course. So Nick broke down that the overall summary essentially 85%, if I'm remembering correct, are compiled of one bedroom and two bedroom apartments between the total 300 units for this 40B project. I attended a walkthrough with Mass Housing and a couple of their town departments. They're looking for comments from each department based on their scope. So in the Planning Board's case, it would be similar comments to what you'd see on new subdivision. This comment period ends July 10th. It's going to be a very similar experience to what happened with the Hawthorne Country Club 40B that's being proposed. Where the Planning Board sends comments. We simplify it into a letter, send it in, that letter gets simplified further into the overall comment letter that is inevitably sent to Mass Housing. So over the next week or two, if you want to send me any comments based on the plans that are in this packet of those 300 units, feel free, and I will send everybody the letter that is inevitably compiled to, that is going to be sent to Mass Housing.
Much, much appreciated, Ross.
Absolutely.
I have a question because the plans, I like to get plans that I can put on the table, so maybe I'll pick some up from you, Ross.
Sure.
But my question is, how much land does this project, the way it sets now? How much land is it using? Because not all that land is good.
No, no, I believe from memory, I can confirm this, Margaret. I wrote down the exact number. They said, I want to say 15 acres.
Okay, because I know a lot about this property and I believe there was only 17 acres that were usable.
Yeah, I want to say, I want to say 15 acres all in the front.
Right, it's all in the front. The back is wetlands and the grade is so steep.
Yes, ma'am.
You could never do anything with it. So this is, this is just a regular 40B. It's not an over 55 or anything like that.
Correct, standard.
Standard 40B, okay. The one question I have because you've got 300 units, so let's just say there's 400 cars, because some are two bedrooms, all right? So let's say 400, 450 cars. That's a lot of traffic coming onto Hathaway Road. Certain times of the day, 8 o'clock, 5 o'clock, you got a line from the Country Club all the way down to Route 6.
Sure.
Really tough. And did anyone while you were there, Ross, did anyone talk about sewer system in Dartmouth? No?
Yes, yes, it did, it did come up. I don't want to speak on, on DPW's behalf, but what I do know is I know that they've been working closely with them to, to iron out the details. That's about as much as I, I know when it comes to the nitty gritty. I know that they have been communicating with each other.
So do you think that they would go to New Beffet? For sure?
I, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. That's, that's a valid question. That can, that can certainly be included.
Question about that.
Sure.
It doesn't seem with all those units that it's going to be too, too bad on the school system. Because you've only got, I forget how many, three bedrooms.
Right. Right, yeah, they're mostly one and two.
Mostly one and two.
Yes, ma'am.
So another, I mean, the, the shape of the wetlands is not straight across
Right.
With the, the, the back of the building. The wetlands actually dips in and back out, kind of like Florida. And I mean, I, I didn't see, and maybe somebody saw it if, and I didn't. But I did not see a, a listing or, or a plan that showed their footprint as it related to the wetlands itself. You know, they, they can't build right across it and they're right abutting. This is another application where we've got an, an, an abutting of, of the Zone 3 for overlay district, like right there. And I agree with, with Margaret. There's, there's a pitch to this that you know, I'm, I'm, it's no, it's no wonder that it's going 40B. We would have a hard time passing this.
Well, it's, it's I've shown it as a broker. I've, I, I know this property because years ago I dealt with it. But the problem has always been, Kevin, that the grade, the grading would cost so much to do anything with it. That developers, you know, they just couldn't make it work. The numbers couldn't work. But I'm just concerned, I really am concerned. Another thing, Ross, and I'll write this up for you. I'm concerned about the height of the buildings. Think that's five stories?
Yes, the, the way I remember them describing essentially is it's, as it goes down on, on the slope, the farther buildings will be taller than the, than, than the ones up front. So the ones farther off the road will be the taller ones. It's essentially being built into, into the, the slope, if you will.
But even four stories, that's pretty tall.
Sure, sure. Yeah, any, that can, that can certainly be a part of the, you know, letter.
I mean, how many, how many stories is is the new one on Dartmouth Street?
Three.
That three?
That's three.
Yeah. I mean, that, that's, that fits comfortably in Dartmouth, you know, where the abutting properties, I think four and five stories is like, wow. We've graduated to Boston, maybe. I don't know.
I, I want to chime in on that though. Cautiously. I, I'm not as offended by the elevation, only because this is all residential. And here we are talking about planning in the future and thinking about an increased density overlay district. Maybe paralleling the sixth corridor where we know we, we might even demand it, but we know based on the zoning and the volume and the traffic count, that many of the first four units will be mixed use, commercial to mixed and so on. And then we're probably looking at three levels above, or I thought we would plan for that. So I, I want to be careful on this project. I want to be careful of looking at what's happened at this site in the past. By no means am I a broker, but my church was looking for an opportunity for a long time. I know a little bit about the topography that's here and the history of this product, of this plot. And it comes before us at a pivotal time where we're talking about the future and increased density. So I just want to plant the seed that I'm not as offended by the height. Especially knowing that the topography slopes significantly. The real question I had was, based on the proposed height, is it within our fire department's abilities?
Well, I think, I think that district has a ladder truck. But I don't know how many others have a ladder truck. I don't know if Paint Narum does. I know Crossroads does.
Okay.
So I'm being told now by my significant other that we all have ladder trucks. So that's a big, you know, that's a big important thing to have with this unit because you're going to need it, as ever, yeah.
Of course.
And I'll also add to that, Nick, as, as buildings get taller, the construction types get more restrictive. You know, you already, you have these buildings would be required to be fully sprinkled. And as they, like I said, depending on the size of the buildings and the heights of the buildings, the fire codes and building codes get more restrictive. So there's more protection built in to the buildings themselves versus a three-story building that you could have, you know, combustible unprotected construction types. Just food, food for thought to, for everybody. And to, and if I, if I may, Mr. Chair, to, to echo some of your statements, I think the, the slope of the site does help in terms of the managing the height. I think we would be prudent to have the architects and the engineers study shadowing and what the massing of the buildings do, not only on the site, but how they might impact the abutters. That's one comment. Also, and Margaret, to your point on the wetlands, if everybody looks on their packet to sheet C101, the rare buildings do appear to encroach within the buffer zone of the wetlands. So that is something to overcome and consider in due time.
Is that page four?
C101 is page four, yes. So you can just make out the dashed line of where the, the buffer is. So there are some challenges to overcome. In addition to that whole row of back parking also being within, not only the buffer, but within, appears to be within the wetland area itself. Again, just based on the, the information that the drawings can, can convey. I also saw this plan.
Very, very, very closely to the overlay district. Because that, that, the little bit that, that comes down, it's a wetland. That, that is, there's also a lot of, of Zone 3 overlay protection district right there.
Upper left?
As you're looking from the front of the building on Hathaway, the far left.
Yeah.
There, there are areas where the overlay district is closer to Hathaway Road than the wetlands are.
Yep.
Well, also, now that I'm looking at that, thank you, Helio. It says here that wetland filling 280 a minus square feet, right? You see it right in the corner there?
Yep.
So, you know, you're absolutely right. They're going into the wetlands and they're going to do some filling of the wetlands.
Yeah, so there's, this, this, for sure, even outside of us, there's, there's some mitigation to happen there. But the site does lend itself. I also saw this plan. I saw so much impervious everywhere between the buildings and the parking lots. And I grant that it is, it is very preliminary. It's very, very preliminary. You know, there's no islands. There's very just token.
Right.
I should have said, there's a token approach to some minimal vegetation at this stage. And I'm very concerned about this much blacktop, this much building that is just covering this entire, you know, 15 acres of site. So again, more to mitigate. I also don't like the pool house building being on the side of the land that is closest to the residential neighborhood versus the church side. Again, there's one more important than the other. I think I'm a little bit more sensitive to the residential side than the church side. Again, with all, with all due and required respect. In addition to some of the other comments that we've made, another 40B development. So I can issue my own two cents on this to you, Ross, in, in a couple of days.
That'd be great.
Margaret?
Yes.
You, were you on the board when this came before us before?
Yes.
Okay. You remember how the people along
Yes.
The people who are but that land were approaching on the property and some of them were encroaching substantially?
Yes.
So there's, you know, they're going to come back and say that's their land again, but they were encroaching on the land.
Right.
Because this is, this is the same, this is the same plan that came before us. You know, I just, the architecture, we asked them to make it a little bit different with the dips and they did. I don't think there's enough plantings. I think there needs to be maybe between the buildings, I don't know if that's an open space. There needs to be an open space. There's no open space. I mean, people do want to sit outside.
Well, you know, I agree, Lori, you know. Well, I'm sure the neighbors are going to come forward on this at the zoning board if this gets that far.
And do you know what's do you know what's hap- ah, sorry, guys. Do you know what's happening with New Beffet and the industrial park? Is that going to go through or not?
I don't know. From what I hear, I don't think they have a lot of acres. Yeah.
Okay, because remember there was going to be a traffic study done?
Yes.
Including this?
Right.
The building of these units. And the industrial park, because they figured the industrial park would dump out and come into Dartmouth because being residents of Dartmouth.
Right.
Maybe we, and I know we got some type of studies in the town hall, so maybe Ross can look for it.
This, this is going to be problematic only for what every, my board members have already mentioned. I mean, there are no greenery in there, the parking. If this, if going by the topography of this land, if this goes and when they have storms and all and they go way back, all this land goes now, goes down and it goes to Fox County Road. Okay? So I just wonder what's going to happen, and I'm sure DPW is a little concerned about it. As Helio pointed out, it's all this asphalt. I mean, this is a lot of coverage here. This, this is if it's on 15 acres of land, it's 15 acres practically of coverage of asphalt and building. I don't see any greenery here.
Yeah.
I don't know, Helio. You tell me. You are the architect.
There'd be a lot to overcome, for sure. And I'll, you know, in my own comments, I'll approach what the challenges are on the site, not, not of what can't be done, but the challenges that would need to be overcome on the site. I am curious though, Margaret and Lori, was there an adverse possession scenario with the abutters? Previously on the site?
Very. They came out in force against him. And then they were somewhat embarrassed because they found out they were encroaching. So it was kind of, you know, like they had ace on their face, but
I don't think there's an adverse possession in, in, it went to court or anything, Helios. That's all I'm talking about.
No, because they never complete, they never carried through. They found out they couldn't.
Just curious.
Now, is there a curb cut moratorium on, on Hathaway Road?
No.
No?
Why? When did they do Hathaway Road?
I seem to remember that another project was on Hathaway Road. We were talking about it. And, and one of the issues that I seemed, and I could be wrong. I re- I remember that, that they were going to have an issue with a curb cut moratorium.
No, Kevin, I don't remember that.
Nope, neither do I.
Well, yeah, that would be DPW, but.
I'm not sure how you can put a moratorium on curb cuts in just one area. I don't know.
I think it has to do with the amount of time that the, the road has been bettered.
It's the paving, Lori.
Yeah.
Well, I just think when this came before is before, they had spent quite a bit of money and they had done a project and they had a good, good attorney representing it. And I won't go into why it didn't go, didn't follow through, but
The reason was they couldn't do it because of zoning.
Right.
But they Remember?
I know, I remember.
Change of view, so they couldn't do it.
I know, but they, they went all that way because no one ever told them that until the last minute.
I know.
Okay.
Margaret, remember there was an area, was there a historical area on this site too?
Yeah, there, there Yeah, Sugaducci walked on the site with, was it Diane, Diana, Diane Gilbert, I think. They walked on the site.
We were going to make that area like a area to sit down and sit around, remember?
Yes.
I don't see that on this site.
No, because nobody's historic, they haven't talked to historic society yet. That's, that's why. Because I'm sure they're going to come forward because they had found that it, there was a site, I, I guess an old, old village or old house or something. I, I kind of forget.
It was an old foundation from an old historical house, and I forgot who the man was.
Yeah.
And so the original developers were going to come back with making that area like a park area for them to sit and and I don't see that on this site.
Yeah, but that wasn't 300 units either, Lori. I forget how many units, but it wasn't 300.
It was like 200, I think.
Yeah. Wasn't three. This is a lot of, this is a lot of lot, coverage for this property. You know, even though the site itself is quite large, but again, you've only got 17 buildable acres and they're using 15.
I don't disagree with anything that's been said across, you know, across the plan. It looks overburdened right from the get-go. But I do know, thinking ahead and planning for the future, we got to figure out how to constructively criticize some of these plans and perhaps let them come back to us with changes that might facilitate the opportunity to close the gap. And I hate to say this, but build our numbers and eventually meet our numbers to not put us in certain corners that we can be put in. So to Helio's credit, by all means, you know, he's the surgeon on this one from this perspective, not me. I, I would love to know in the near future if changes made this less burdensome and more applicable to what we're looking for, including open space. And contribute to our numbers in town. And, and maybe contribute to a model that will slowly pave the way for what we are looking to do from a planning perspective moving forward and not be so reactionary or defensive when something comes before us, but start laying out an outline for the offensive plan in Dartmouth over the next five, 10, 15 years. So
Well, Ross, I have another question. There has to be a percentage of affordable units here, correct?
I, I believe so. I, I, I'm pretty sure it's, it may not be in that exact document, but it, we received a handful of documents, so I can make sure. Whatever one has that I can forward your way.
Is it 20%?
I want to make sure it's not the studio apartments.
I thought I saw this somewhere. I thought.
I think it's 20%, and I don't think they can just limit it to one thing. They have to mix it.
Yeah. I believe they have to evenly distribute. Exactly, exactly.
They can't do that.
Mass Housing actually, I recall now, has said that there's actually a, they change, that's like a, a rule within 40B.
It's a rule. You can't do that. So
You can't tell which one is affordable. You can't, it has to be even distribution. They have to be even spread. It's they've prepared for all that, thankfully.
No, to get back to you, Nick, I agree with everything that you say, okay? Well, I don't I also, when I'm, when, when we do, we're thinking of an overlay and we want to do this. The other thing that we have to be, for instance, if this, if this property was being built on Route 6 in Dartmouth in the general business zone, I have no problem with four and five story.
Understood.
I really don't. But you have a lot of residential there. That's the one thing. And the second thing is the traffic I'm concerned about, okay? I, I like the mixture of units, one and two bedrooms. I like that very much. Okay, so that's something that we should add on when we're doing these things. But I don't like, and we, really, the Planning Board has not much to say about this, okay? But I don't like that there are no greenery's. I don't see anything. If you go to the unit that is being done on, on Dartmouth Street, there's some thought there for, for the residents to go out, walk around, sit down. I've been into the other one that they built, very nice, you know, paths and areas in the wintertime where people can go and play games and all. And there's some thought put in there. This one, you know, I think is, as I think one of you said, they're just throwing that out now to see how much they can get and where it'll come back with the zoning.
Well, clearly the message is, I believe the sentiment of this board, that this particular plan is simply too much in all regards. For that site, correct? That's, that's how we feel at this point in time, based on what we see.
I would just say this, Nick, here, we will, we should transmit the challenges that The challenges that we feel need to be overcome. And we will challenge them on how to overcome them. Shouldn't be an if, but a how.
Sure.
And some things might turn into an if, but I, from my standpoint, and I'm, I'm only one voice. Um here's what we're concerned with, how do you mitigate it? So that this thing can hopefully be real.
I like it. Anyone else? Ross, anything else to share, bud?
I don't think so. I would just say probably by, maybe, I don't know, next Tuesday or so. Uh let me check the date here. Yeah, I think by next Tuesday or so would probably be appropriate. That would give me about a week To, to draft that letter and send it out to everyone, make sure they can all proofread it, make sure everyone's happy before um I send it over to, be sent to uh the big package to Mass Housing. So I'd say by, by the first, if possible, if people could send me comments.
Okay. All right. If we're good, we'll move on to agenda item number two. And this is the ongoing discussion of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six priority list. Does anybody have anything they want to bring to this at this moment?
Mr. Chairman, if I could? Yes. Um so one of, one of the items um in regards to housing, on, on June tenth, we met with the Housing Production Plan Committee. Um one of the items we discussed is, um this is a joint effort with Serp Ed. Serp Ed had put out a, a survey to try to gauge interest of the citizens of the town Um to see what the citizens' view of our housing needs could be going forward as part of the five-year plan to outline. Um one of the things, they, at the time, I believe they only had about a hundred responses, um which doesn't really give us Um a lot of data to use towards um implementing some of the things through, through a priority list, through the master plan. So we offered up a few suggestions. One, we put it on the town website. Um I, I, we had emailed it out to the board members, but um town website, put it on the board outside our office. Be cut out on social media through our social media um person. Um also, we're looking to get it put in the Dartmouth Week. Perfect. Um yeah, so um we, we got that out. Also, as part of that, they reached out to me. Um and we're hoping to do an interview this week, just to kinda go over it, to kinda give people a little more insight. Um I think it's important that we get a, a wide range of responses, um people that are looking You know, more towards age, age-restricted housing, uh people with families moving to town. There's questions in there about uh veterans' housing, younger residents, uh people, school-aged children. What type of housing people would be looking at? So I think this kinda falls into a lot of the items we've been discussing, so The, anybody um has people that are interested in having their, their voices heard. I would, I would push them towards filling out the survey. It's a good starting point for us to, to address some of these um, of these concerns. And hopefully get a good um, a good volume of responses so that the housing production plan can be as effective as possible.
It's on Dartmouth Weekly and I took the survey already. If you go online to Dartmouth Weekly, Uh it says, I forget exactly, but are you inter- can you help with housing or something like that? So I hit it. And uh I'm on that housing deduction plan and I took the whole survey, took about ten minutes maybe. And they asked all the questions and I was so happy that it was on there because hopefully people will go to Dartmouth Weekly and take the survey. And we get more than a hundred people returning.
Okay, well, that's great.
All my members of the board should go.
Not only us, but we can share that link. I mean, I hate to use the word Facebook, but we can share that link amongst friends and families and try and basically uh build a response.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I, and I feel like I said, I think the, the more wide-ranging responses we get, it'll help us
Right.
As a planning board, help the Housing Production Plan Committee, try to really Get, get these, these things through our, through our priority list, through the master plan to give us a, a good response. So when we do come up with our plan presented to town meeting down the road, we can look towards a survey to say We've gotten a lot of responses, this is what the town is looking for and I think that'll help us um Be able to proceed to get some of these, these items addressed.
Great.
Yeah, I'll like all that. I, I completed it. It was, it was actually very well done, the way that the survey was put together, very well done.
It really was and I was happy to see it there. Ross, um we're having a guest at our next meeting, right?
That is correct, which is, I, I misspoke at the previous meeting uh about the date. It is July fourteenth. I said the seventh, uh it's the fourteenth.
All right, regarding the priority list, anybody wanna share any further thoughts and or chip away at anything in particular?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just wanna share, I did go back and um and reviewed uh Last meetings, it's the one I was not present at and there's a lot that um I will echo. I was, I left the discussion um feeling we need to tread carefully when it comes to zoning. You know, when we, when the discussion turned to um, you know, one home per one acre and whether that's two or three homes. I think that is um something we need to be very careful, should we go down that, that, that path. But the overlay in the, in the density, you know, again, Route six was thrown about. There's a lot of momentum that we can build there. The opportunity there um Is glaring, in my view.
Much, much appreciated, Helio.
The Route six area is an aquifer area.
Say that again, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Six area is in our aquifer area, which limits the coverage and it limits what you can put on it.
Not all of it, though, Laurie.
Well, the, the stuff down there, shards isn't, but from them all up is aquifer.
Laurie, what about expanding upon structures that are there and existing coverage? Quote-unquote to increase density?
You could probably go up. But in a lot of those areas, you're not gonna be able to expand, you know, vertically Or horizontally. I don't know. It's something to look at because it's in our aquifer area. That was one of the things that uh I kept the previous board from doing a lot of stuff.
There's a section that's open between Cross Road and Font's Corner Road. And then basically from uh the Country Club East Is open.
Yeah, Country Club East is good.
You're talking about new construction?
We were just talking about what's What areas are in the Aquifer Overlay District and not?
Well, let, let's strategize for a moment. I mean, do, do we want to, over the course of the next two to three meetings, Begin to share outlines of these thoughts and schematics and or perhaps start to outline Where this increased density overlay district may exist? You know, how, how, how do we take it from where we are today to something that has potential?
Mr. Chair, if I could comment?
Sure.
Uh one of the things we talked about last meeting is um with the housing production plan, we're gonna get a report Um of what is in the best interest of the town, suggestions, um goals moving forward. So I know we talked about looking to, to get that done. It's expected to be done by the end of the year. Um so we talked about waiting till we got that report in hands To see what is advised through, through Serp Ed and through the Housing Production Plan Committee um in order to um Move forward in the, in the best direction for the town. Um one other thing, I was gonna save it to the planner's report, but I, we can, I can throw it in now. Uh we had talked um in the past, the state has a new forty Y starter home community. We were waiting for Draft regulations from the town, um excuse me, from the state to come forward. Uh we just, we just received that. There's a comment period open till July twenty-fifth. I was planning on sending out those um Those preliminary um regulations out tomorrow to the board, so the board could take a look at them. Um and we could discuss at the next meeting. Uh so that's, that's one option. Um that goes in, it's, it's higher density, it can be incorporated into a mixed use. It has Um financial benefits to the town, similar to the forty R um overlay district the town Did at the Lincoln Park Project. Uh so that's just something to look for. Like I said, I We'll get that out to the board tomorrow, so you have some time to review it, ask questions. And um we'll be able to discuss that at the next meeting, so just a couple items to think about as, as we're beginning the discussion on these items.
So I, I appreciate the forty Y starter home reg being, you know, distributed, disseminated for us to be brought up to speed. I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about the housing production plan. The housing production plan is set to be completed year end. And it's gonna be a production plan that's gonna make, let's just say, broad-based suggestions to us? Or is it gonna, it's gonna give us data that's gonna help point us in a direction?
Yeah, there'll, there'll, there'll be data, there'll be the, the feedback from the survey. Um there'll be, I, I believe Probably a couple meetings that we included the previous Housing Production Plan Committee, just so the board members could see what we did. We mean the planning board did um in twenty eighteen. I can pass that along again, just to Give the board members kind of an idea of what we'll be getting out of that report, but it has goals. Shows areas of town where, where different strategies could be initiated. Uh so there's, there'll be a lot of information that'll help guide, guide the board and procedures going forward.
So let me, let me ask, let me ask you and the board. By all means, I appreciate all that information, but between now and year end is a long time. And I don't wanna be viewed or perceived as, because sometimes perception is reality, That we are not planning and we are not thinking and we are waiting to react. Would it not be prudent for us to put our minds together As it relates to developing an increased density overlay district and then based on what we get from the housing production pa- plan, Amend and tweak our thoughts and try and really zone in on what the plan suggests compared to what we've put together To tighten up our thoughts, so maybe we're ready for town meeting in the spring, or is that just a pipe dream on my behalf?
Well, um I'm gonna say this and, and uh I talked to Laurie about this and um Previous planning boards, I have not been on one of those that did it. Laurie has. Previous planning boards had meetings that were Special meetings that on the agenda, all they did was talk about what they were gonna do. For instance, my thought would be, maybe once a month, we have an additional meeting That we get together and we either come up with sites that we think should be included for the overlay. Uh and all we discuss is the overlay district and nothing else, okay? Because to do it during regular meetings, sometimes it's just by nine o'clock, I can't think, okay?
I agree, I agree.
So Laurie, how often did you do that?
You don't wanna know. We used to meet, we used to, we used to meet, we met every week. Every, because we were so busy, we met every week. Every other week was a planning-only week and every other week was a business meeting only. But what I'm finding since I've been on the board is I don't know how to say this, but this is very boring. This is nothing like what we went through. So we could probably do one meeting um. It all depends on how long the meetings go. We could probably do something like, look, if we finish our business by eight o'clock, we could spend an hour. But we do have that special one month, one month meeting. Um and we'd have all the information sent to us ahead of time. We'd have the maps for us to look at. And we'd say, well gee, this is where we want it, what's there, what's not there. Um It, it's intensive. It's not, you know, just sitting here and discussing, gee, I like this, I like that. It, it's intensive.
Yeah, a- and see, the thing is, uh even when I was on the planning board, now it's very slow since you've come on. But previously, we were busy, very, very busy. But, you know, subdivisions has kinda tied died down, commercial.
Yeah.
We haven't got too many commercial projects coming to town, you know, uh and one of the reasons I see it is because You know, God only makes so much land and there isn't a whole lot of commercial land available in Dartmouth, okay? And residential land, there's lots that are available and, you know, but not like it used to be. So
Most of the good land's been taken up, I think.
Yeah, I, I'd like to see us do one, start with one meeting a month and make it a business meeting. Uh I don't know how the rest of the board is.
I agree with that, but I think what we need to do is make sure that we have all the information we need
That's right.
At that meeting, given to us, so that we can start studying it, because like I said, it's I don't wanna make it sound like, you know, you're studying for a major exam or something, but it is intensive. You've gotta look at it, you have to look at it and think about it. And is this what we want? Is this not what we want? Do we want it in this area? Do we wanna carve out this space or that space? So, you know, you have to sit down and say, okay, we're gonna do it and do it. Cuz it's talking about it like we are now is gonna get nowhere.
Right, and we also have, have to have town council look at what we do. And they're the ones who have to help us write the bylaws. But here's what I'm gonna do. I, I, I don't speak for my board members. I'm gonna get a plot plan or a map Of the district that I think should be in the overlay and I'm gonna uh give that to Ross in, in a week or two. And I will outline what I think should be and maybe uh Dan and Ross can uh share it with you and see if you people agree and You know, that's how I'm gonna start.
I think that's a great idea and it's above and beyond and um I, I'm all for the meeting. Uh I'm all for the special meeting and I think, yes, I think once a month, perhaps the next two months, three months is probably a viable option. My question specifically for Laurie and Margaret is If we back ourselves up from spring town meeting, Do we have ample time taking this approach? Uh let's just say a, a July, August, September meeting And then maybe October, November, December, um you know, it's once or twice as needed. Are we putting ourselves in a position, knowing that we're gonna have the housing production plan at the end of the year, to perhaps be ready For the spring, or is that just too fast?
If we do the work, it's not too fast, but we have to do the work.
Right. Okay.
I mean, because I think Uh Dan, do you remember what the timeframe is to have something at town meeting? Is it like a two months in advance over, before it or something like that?
We, we have the timeframe in the office. I can look into that. Uh I don't remember the exact timeframe. There's, there's certain things, if, if we, if you, if we're talking about um, you know, coming up with new, new bylaws, anything like that. There's, there's a timeframe for when to have a public hearing, how, how much earlier you have to be before that. I don't remember those dates specifically off the top of my head. But I wanna, I wanna say it was like into April maybe, for, for this, for this spring town meeting that it had to be done. So I think, I think there is time, that we have a, a general plan in place um to, to go, but um I said I had a, had a, a meeting with somebody from the Attorney General's Office and they gave us a, a nice breakdown of the whole schedule Of, of what needs to be done in certain timeframes to make sure we're all set to be on town meeting. So we do have that in the office.
Yeah, you also have to remember that we have to give enough time to town council to review it and go over it too.
Right.
And that could take a month. I mean, I can remember that taking a couple of months at, some, on some of our projects.
All right, well, why don't we Why don't we um Agree and appreciate Margaret taking the initiative to do what she shared with us. And perhaps if any of us have a chance to do something similar. So rather than what this would be considered maybe as increased density chatter, Uh we'll start to become objective as of the next meeting, as we start sharing some of the measures like Margaret mentioned. I think it'll just start putting a face to our thoughts or um letting other people follow along, perhaps more objectively. Because I agree right now, we're just kicking it around, but honestly, as a rookie, I'm kicking it around, looking to understand But honestly, as a rookie, I'm kicking it around, looking to understand and read between the lines, how we kickstart it. And and get it going, so, and I feel like I understand that at this point. Um anybody else on, I'm sorry?
I just wanna say one more comment, if we wanna do this overlay district, I think what everyone needs to do is to get a map of the town of Dartmouth. Look at it, decide where they wanna go, number one, so we all have our own maps and our own ideas, and then we can all get together and come up with one map. Number two, we need to decide what do we mean, mean by a density overlay district? And what do we foresee seeing there, so we get ideas, and then from there, we have to write everything.
Agreed.
Does everybody, has everybody played around with the mass mapper?
No, I haven't really played around with it, Kevin.
I I use it every meeting.
Really?
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
Okay.
I highly suggest that you guys uh tinker around with it. Uh if you have questions, call Ross or or me or Dan. Um it is an invaluable tool for you to see. What type of of land exists where? Uh and and just uh the the normal geology of of uh. Of 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 all of our town, the whole town.
Are you talking about the GIS maps?
Uh those were phased out. We're now using the mass mapper.
Oh, okay, I I I used to use GI, I still do.
I I did too, but that's uh.
Okay.
I guess the data in there was, for whatever reason, we we opted to to as a town to go to mass mapper.
Okay.
Kevin, I have a quick question while you're there, so. When we were looking at that other project and you were looking at the mass mapper, where did you go, uh did you go under conservation to narrow down what you were looking at?
Uh so typically, uh you mean the halfway?
Yeah, I'm just curious.
So typically, I go to the uh the address and uh. Uh the address is not formally an address yet, but it's eighty-eight, one twenty-eight. And you you take a look, a- and you can see like that's a huge parcel of land, but. Uh it it's uh, a a lot of it is wetlands, and then you start clicking off. Uh what you wanna see, I always click off the uh the three uh aqua, aquifer overlay districts. Uh and then you can get uh elevation lines, the to measure how how steep. Uh rise, fall, or how how level the uh the property is or isn't. Um and uh, you know, sometimes, especially with the aquifer overlay districts. If you zoom out and then zoom back in, it pops up and and back, so you have to fiddle with it a little bit. Uh but, yeah, I I you've got, uh just to read off Dartmouth local data, aquifers. Contours, local confor- uh conservation, parcels, uh zoning. Uh you can add the aerial photographs. Um and then you've got a bunch of other things, property tax, parcels, buildings, open space. Regulatory areas, municipal and other boundaries, coastal and marine features. Wetland related, obviously, that's an easy one to always, always click. Um so, yeah, there's, there's a whole lot of information in here, if you're going, if you're looking around at areas. Uh it it's, it's a, an invaluable tool. And you know, something that looks like a great opportunity, oh, I didn't, I didn't know that was right there that abuts this.
Right.
Kevin, I have a question, how do you look at that and look at your, your packet for tonight at the same time? Are you getting in and out?
Uh you mean from a computer perspective?
Yeah.
Uh I have different tabs, and I I just, you know, I I have the binder in one tab, and then I have uh. The the mass mapper in a second tab and I go back and forth, it's not, you can't overlay them necessarily. Uh like I can't go onto mass mapper and then see what they're proposing.
Okay.
Um but if you use some, some points. Uh you know, they, they, you you can kinda guess, like I'm looking right now on mass mapper. At uh, there's one twenty-eight Hathaway Road, which is the first plot. Uh to the the northeast of the proposed development. Um and then there's nine Eisenhower and eleven Eisenhower, and if, then if you go back to the the binder. Uh you can take a look and you can see to the, uh as as it's printed in the binder. Uh the, on the, to the right-hand side of the proposed development, those are those three. Plots, so you can kinda guesstimate how far deep it goes. Into the mass mapper property.
Okay.
Cuz I'm going back, one, two, three, four, five, five plots. On uh Eisenhower, so it's one, two, three, four, five. Um, you know, that. Some, somebody's not looking right unless they, they just decided that it's okay to build in the middle of wetlands. Cuz everything from one, two, three, four, five. Uh that fifth property, the northernmost property line, draw a line across. And that is where the uh DEP wetlands starts.
Yep.
And it sinks all the way down and pokes down. There's one small area that pokes down to as far down as uh. Even part of one twenty-eight Hathaway, right? The first parcel over on the left-hand side next to eighty-eight Hathaway.
Mister Chairman, if I, could I just add one comment into that? When you, when you're looking at the wetland layers, um they tend to not be very accurate, if you're using the DEP wetland layer. There's another layer that's called hydric soils. That tends to be significantly more accurate, although not. Obviously as good as, as getting a delineation done, but the DEP wetland layer is notoriously. Well off from, from what's on the ground. Soil layer that tends to give you at least a little bit better representation, just for going forward.
I just added the hydric soil layer. Um and half of the parcel. Uh the the northeastern parcel is clear of hydric soil. But the, the left side, closer to eighty-eight Hathaway. Uh the hydric soil, it is uh runs as far down to. Uh and just a little bit into the third parcel.
Kevin, can I interrupt for a minute, where, where is the hydric soil, uh where, where, under what category are you finding that? Cuz I'm struggling, even though I'm looking at the map.
Uh go under uh local conservation and soils, and then Dartmouth hydric soils.
All right, I'm gonna let you continue, cuz I don't even see that. I'll I'll follow up after the meeting, though.
And the, the, you know, you can take a look and see the, the hydric soils, also the, the uh. You know, zone three overlay district goes, pretty much matches up with, in this particular parcel. The hydric soils area.
Uh if if anybody wants a mass map retour, you can always feel free to stop by the, the planning office, I I had a pretty big hand in uh. In developing this, so um. I can help any, help anybody out with this, uh e- even just navigating it, feel free to stop in.
Thank you, Ross.
Thank you.
Okay, well, this, I think, is extremely helpful to all of us to uh have a better understanding as we're reviewing any project. Anything else on the priority list that wants to be shared at this point? We're good for now, we um. We'll do our best to follow Margaret's footsteps in what she's gonna do as step one, perhaps we start doing the same. And I think if we can each, that need the help, stop in and see Ross, so that the mapper can be referenced. In the meetings will be very helpful based on the details um that the mapper provides, so. All right. With that in mind, um number three, agenda number three, discussion potential article twenty-four changes, Dan or Ross, do you wanna just start us off?
Yeah, so, this kinda going back to what we talked about with, with the kinda wait. A little bit, thought process on the housing for the housing production plan. Um the planning staff wanted to dive into um doing an update of article twenty-four. We're approaching ten, about ten years since that initially went into effect, um I had reached out to town council. Um to just get kind of an outline of some of the things we talked about for the housing scheduling, getting things going. Um as a first step, um we would like to do a, a workshop. In in town hall, um I've talked to a few other departments about getting together. Um to be a part of that workshop, as part of, of doing this, um we could have. One to two board members um be a part of those discussions. Um if if any of the board members have interest in doing that, um we were looking to try, you know, probably sometime in July to hopefully. Get that going, um basically have, go through that workshop, outline um. Items that that we're looking to see, uh just from a real general standpoint. Permitting has changed, we're now in a portal as opposed to application, so there's different things with that, there have been studies done. Um offering suggestions for for site plan review, up updates, those really haven't been. Um taken into account, off-street parking requirements, we've spoken on that a few times at meetings. Drainage regulations have changed with the stormwater bylaw. And then just, you know, different verbiage, cleanup tech, so there's a lot of, a lot of items in there. So that's something we had, had talked about in previous meetings about um taking that time while we're waiting for the housing production plan. Give us some feedback that, to try to tackle this article twenty-four, which goes into some of the items we just discussed. The opposite of the housing is the commercial, wh- what can we do to help commercial development town? And I think a lot of these things that we're talking about in article twenty-four, we can use to um, to help on that end. Um so, like I said, workshop first, once we kinda get an outline come before, um involve town council. We'd have a pre-meeting with town council that would come to a planning board meeting. Then we'd have a meeting with the board as kinda like a pre-hearing. Um to go over some of the issues that, that the board has talked about, town council's talked about, then we'd have a public hearing to discuss, so. It's a pretty lengthy process with that as well, so that's, like I said, that's something we had talked about in previous meetings. I don't know how the board feels now that we're talking about trying to take a stab at an overlay district. Um ahead of the housing production plan, if that changes people's thoughts from what we discussed at previous meetings, but. Um it's definitely something I think is is warranted and needed, so I like to pursue. Making these article twenty-four updates, but I think we can also um work in an overlay district discussion as well. To get that correct.
Dan, I have to agree with you, and I think most of this work won't be done by the planning board as a whole. This work will be done by you and a group put together of the various boards. And once you've gone through these articles and you've made your, just your changes that you wanna make, then it would come to the planning board. And that would be after everything's been discussed and just, and by all the, the various boards in town, town council. Then it can come to the planning board, and then we would go through it and say, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no, probably it's gonna be more of us, yes is the no, it's obviously. But this is how the aquifer, um aquifer area was done, this was how this, um pay naram was done, it was done by a group. And then it was brought to the planning board, and we critiqued it and approved it, and went to town meeting and was approved. So I think this is a really good way of doing this, it gets more work done, because the professionals that were involved, and then it comes to the planning board. If that makes sense.
Yeah, I've 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 talked to um representatives from the DPW, they're on board, I've talked to the zoning enforcement officer, um he's on board. Um and if it's something that the board wants me to continue to pursue, I can reach out to, to other members of, of the town as well.
I just, I wanna share one thing, and and it comes with a limitation. It it comes with the fact that I'm, I'm limited in my knowledge of some of the procedures and processes that are ahead of us. My goal, one of, one of my goals is not necessarily to succeed in any thoughts that I have present day. But it is to prevent giving someone from the town the opportunity to say that the planning board doesn't plan, the planning board reacts. And I, I wanna just make sure, and I'm saying this cautiously, because. We're obviously meeting and we're putting our minds together in a constructive and critical way for the best interest of the town. All I'm trying to share between now and the housing production plan and the spring town meeting, et cetera, et cetera, is the fact that I wanna make sure we're collaborating. In a planning way, because ultimately, I want to avoid someone having the opportunity to tell us what we didn't do. Cuz I don't wanna leave room for that opportunity, that's all, and I'm not saying that I know enough to carry us forward. But I do wanna push forward if possible, so we're, obviously with everyone's guidance, you know, I mean Laurie shared critical information tonight and. Margaret took a huge step in what she's gonna do, which is, quite frankly, both of those are propellents in the subject matter, so. I appreciate everyone's effort, and I don't want anyone to think that I'm trying to get something done in a month or two and I'm wet behind the ears and I don't know. Cuz I'll clear the air, I don't know, but I do know that I don't want anyone to critically. Or criticize us for not planning, that's all, so um I think we're making great progress just tonight with the motion, with the uh. You know, with what we've shared, so.
Mister Chair, if I could just, just add one follow-up on that?
Yep.
Um um what Margaret was talking about, looking at plans, um Ross and I have started that process as well, so.
Oh, good.
Anytime, anytime that we can, that if you wanna come in and we can meet, we have some plans showing overlays of sewer and water, cuz those are gonna be key contributors to. Know what we can do in some of these overlays, so.
Sure.
These, these, these things are, we're, we're, we're past step one at least, but. I I think we can do both.
Should we call you, uh Dan, to make an appointment, to go in?
Sure.
Okay.
Great, Laurie, you were saying something, I believe, just a moment ago, sorry.
No, I was saying, I think you're doing a good job, so.
Oh, sorry, I know, I know you said something before Dan started, I appreciate that, I think, I think we're a great group and um we definitely have the town's best interest in mind, so. All right, so as far as article twenty-four goes, um we'll talk about scheduling the twenty, the article twenty-four workshop. We'll take it upon ourselves to reach out to Dan and stop in and look at some of the maps that he just shared. And um we'll follow up accordingly.
I have a question, Dan, do you think we need to make a motion to tell you to go ahead with this, just so that there's no confusion with it, confusion with anyone?
I don't think so, like we said, we, we talk about it, I think it gives um hopefully some board members to think about if they like to, to be involved. With that, so hopefully at next meeting, um. Hopefully, a board member or two would like to step forward and be a part of it, and I think we can go from there for the next meeting.
Great. All right. Item number four, the minutes of the June ninth, two thousand twenty-five meeting.
Mister Chairman, if I could add one thing for that?
Yes.
Um just reading through it, the date was wrong, um so if the board is okay with everything else, I would just. Um before um the board votes to approve the minutes, um it was listed as uh the meeting on June sixth, that should be June ninth, so. They're gonna approve, I'll just approve with um revising the date to June ninth.
Excellent. So we are looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the June ninth meeting with, in the motion, an amendment to the date that was inaccurate, stated June sixth. Change to, change to June ninth.
Both.
Motion made by Kevin Estes?
Second.
Second by Lori and Miller. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Lori and Miller?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Hilaia Rosa? Yes, sorry about that, Hilaia.
No worries.
Number five, correspondence, Ross or Dan?
Just, just one correspondence from the city of Fall River, so just a typical. Motion needed on that.
Motion to acknowledge and file.
Motion made to acknowledge and file, number five correspondence by Kevin Estes.
Second.
Second by Hilaia Rosa. All in favor, Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Hilaia Rosa?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Lori and Miller?
Yes.
Nick Saicopatis, yes. Item number six for your information, old business, new business, incoming zoning board applications, Dan or Ross?
Nothing, nothing as of when we, when we put up the agenda, there was one that came in. It's for an expansion of a, of a non-conformity, looking to get closer setbacks to a property line, but nothing. It's just for residential house.
Okay.
Dan, I, I have a question. I was looking at Dartmouth Weekly. Maybe I'm wrong, but I thought I saw. Something going before the zoning board of appeals for the country club?
The only, it, it'll be a comprehensive permit once the forty B is.
No, no, the country club. The New Beffet Country Club on the zoning board.
I have not seen that, Ross. Have you seen that?
Not that I'm, not that I'm aware of.
You know, I, so I, I, I saw something for conservation commission. They were gonna do some work, which I've seen already out there. They were, they were doing some, some maintenance that was in, within resource areas, but.
Oh, okay. Maybe that was it.
I, I haven't seen anything for zoning board on that.
Okay, maybe it was conservation. Might have been conservation.
I'll check.
All right, zoning board of appeals, decisions, illegal ads?
Nothing new for that one.
All right, subcommittee reports. Does anybody have anything to offer regarding the subcommittee?
Nothing.
Negative, negative, none for me. I believe soil needs twice a year from what I was told, so.
This coming Wednesday.
What's that, Kev?
Serpent is meeting this coming Wednesday.
Okay, great. If there are no other subcommittee reports, we'll go on to the planners report?
I think we hit on, on most of the stuff I wanted to talk about. We talked about the forty Y. I'll get that out to, out to the board. Just to reiterate, we have till July twenty-fifth if we want to make any comments on that. Talked about the survey already. One item that, that is listed there, PSP twenty-five dash one. That was, we were, we were thinking there would be an application for an amendment to a site plan. They had sent it in. DPW and planning staff had made some comments, but last week before we, we put it on the agenda. The applicant went through the application, so I just wanted the board to be aware of that, in case there are any questions. Everybody on the board, all the board members would be aware that that was what happened with that. That was for. Four thirty-three points corner. The corner of Ventura. That's it for, for reports.
All right, brings us to chairperson's report and I don't have much to report. Other than the fact that I look forward to working with everybody and. Aside from open meeting violations, I'm, I'm quite flexible during the work week and with small blocks of time. And I'm, I'm happy to meet and or collaborate with either of the board members. If it's, you know, contribute, to contribute to the upcoming meeting and or what our agenda is, short term or long term. Dan and Ross, I am going to take you up on stopping by and I'm sure other board members are going to do the same to look at some of these maps together. To help formulate. Basically constructively criticize the opinions I may have or we may have today. As it relates to infrastructure and what the real opportunity or, or lack of opportunity is to help narrow down. What a potential overlay maybe or not. So I appreciate you guys sharing the fact that we can stop in and do that kind of hand in hand. Other than that, I don't have more to share. So if anybody else wants to share anything at this point, before we move on to agenda item number seven, the floor is open.
Now you know why I'm looking this way. I'm looking at the other screen to, to look at the, the mass map.
You were avoiding us all night long.
And I, I'm, I'm not avoiding you guys.
Okay, so Kevin, you have two computers going. You have two screens going. That's how you're doing it.
Well, I, I do, but one has, one, one is small with the camera. But I have the exact same screen. On a much larger monitor. So when I look over here, I'm looking at the same screen, but it's just much bigger.
Lori, if you just open your Google Chrome or whatever browser you're using, open it again, it'll create another page, another tab. And then you'll go to a different website. So you'll have.
I just hate getting, yeah, I hate getting in and out because I lose it.
Yeah, you won't have to once you do that. All right, item number seven. Adjourn. If you would like.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made to adjourn by Hilaia Rosa. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Estes. Hilaia Rosa?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yeah.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
And Nick Saicopatis, yes. Excuse me. Thank you all.